And if everybody's ready, we will call to order the regular board meeting of November 16th, 2020. All please rise to the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which it stands one nation.
Under God.
And justice for all.
First thing up is approval of vouchers. Scroll down. Has everybody had a chance to review? And if they have, if I can have a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor? I. Most vouchers have been approved. Approval of minutes for September and October. Has everyone had a chance to go through these?
I believe so. There were some corrections made also today. So I believe that there.
Yeah, the the big one I caught is that you've got the October 19th date on the month. Okay.
I fixed it.
Beyond that, I think, keep doing this because these are very detailed and yeah, I was very happy. Everybody. With the amount of detail that you had in these, these are really good. Are there any other changes that haven't been identified today? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
I'll go Lisa and Dave seconded there. All those in favor?
I.
I. We'll get those posted as soon as possible.
Yep.
The monthly financial statement. Anybody want to just talk about that quick?
Yep. Okay, so at the end of October, we had $288,941.37 in the checking account. I deposited $9,658.98. The abstract number six totals $46,945.30. Our payroll was $4,593.16. So the expenses were $51,538.46, which leaves our total checking now at $247,061.89. And our savings is $131,990.41, which gives us a total estimated balance right now. You know, estimated, I'm saying by like a dollar or two, because this is pretty accurate.
Anybody have any questions for Mindy on that? Yeah, one little typo under for totals there. There's an A instead of an S.
Okay.
Alright, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for for doing that. I can't really see it very well. I don't know if you can forward it after the meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can. I have everything.
Hold on, I'm just admitting. The election notice?
A notice of annual village election because it's actually four months from now. So this has to be published. So it's in the paper. It'll be in the Putnam County News on Wednesday. Notice is hereby given that the annual election of and for the village of Nelsonville, Putnam County will be held in said village at the municipal building 258 Main Street on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021, with the polls open between the hours of noon and 9:00 PM. And that at such election, the following officers are to be elected for the term set opposite here too. Trustee two-year term and trustee two-year term. So two trustee positions are up that didn't run this time. So that's the election announcement.
Thank you. Reports, the Putnam County Hazard Mitigation Program. Mindy, do you want to speak to that?
Okay, so there you go. So this is something that we worked on with the rest of the county. All the municipalities participated and did their updates. So now they're online and they're really looking for public input on these. So it's on the Facebook page with the link. Dove, when you have a chance, if you can see what I put on the Facebook page and put that on the website, because it gives you the link.
It's already on the website.
Oh, good. Good, thank you. So anyway, they're looking for public input. I believe it's open until December 6th. And it's interesting for the public to look at. It's not just us, it's the county and our surrounding communities. And I suggest everybody look at it. You know, it's like natural disasters that could happen and what we're prepared to do and not do.
Yeah, and I, we're actually undergoing one as we speak. So COVID is part of the whole hazard mitigation and the ability to respond to pandemics and things like that. So it's not just flooding, it's it's everything. And it's incredibly detailed and it goes into different types of shelter in place, like what our facilities are are capable of, what some of our shortcomings are. You know, we don't have any backup generators on our, any of our municipal buildings. Things like that. So definitely take a look at it and give us any feedback that you come away with.
Yeah, Mike, I was looking at it and that was actually something that jumped out at me is the lack of generators. It seems like maybe in next year's budget, we could carve out some money for that. That seems like an important thing.
I don't even, I think the sheriff's substation solved one. I'm not positive. I'd have to ask Bill actually about that and see. But I mean, that that is also one that we could identify as kind of a shelter in place area as well. I think they identified the Sonic Temple and I forget what the other one was, Mindy, off the top of my head.
Doesn't Cold Spring Firehouse have a generator?
It does, but they want specifically what's within our municipal limits, so.
Maybe the ambulance corps.
Yeah, that's technically Cold Spring too, though.
Yeah, it's right on the border. Yeah, I hear their generator when they're testing it.
Yeah. Alright, so take a look at that. Leaf pickup, the week of 12/5. Did you want to bring Mark in now?
Well, we want, what, I think that we should because there were questions about whether we can add brush into that. And you guys want to do something with chipping stuff up and putting it as mulch on the trailhead, right?
Yeah, we need to run that by Will Neves at OSI or whoever our contact is there now, just to make sure that it's alright. But if that was something that we could do with some of the, you know, branches and clippings and things that are, you know, mulchable.
Okay, well, that's that's Mark's department because some of it is, some of it isn't. So I'll let him talk about that.
Mark, you there?
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Doing good, bud. Thank you for having me.
No, thanks for showing up.
No problem.
Yeah, so we had gotten some questions in our workshop about possibly doing a kind of a scaled down brush pickup like we did earlier in the summer. Is that possible?
It is possible, but I'd like to go, you know, a little different than we did the last time. You know, we can't. Some, some people had like whole trees out by their yard. You know, we're down there with a chainsaw, with the chipper, cutting the stuff up. Something has to be manageable enough to put inside a container, you know, that's bundled up neatly and we throw it in.
Alright.
I mean, now, if, if, if we were to, I mean, I don't know how to go about brush pickup. I mean, I, it's just. If we put a dumpster somewhere on some, like on the, on the village, on the Nelsonville property somewhere, we can just, everybody can just bring what they want and throw in the dumpster. As far as chipping it up, I mean, like something that's tiny, it's more of a pain in the neck to try to run through a chipper.
Alright.
I don't.
It's gonna mess the road.
Sorry. Yeah, I would not advise, and Lisa, you weigh in on this, but I think a lot of the brush that people might be leaving out are invasive species or things that they've collected from their garden that wouldn't necessarily make the right chipping path way that I think we're envisioning, right, Lisa? So like, maybe those are two separate things.
Yeah, I think we're trying to figure out to, yeah, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, yeah, we were trying to do, we were trying to combine two, two separate issues. One was the, the brush that had been dumped after the last pickup, that there's, there's all kinds of stuff in the, in the woods. And then, so the invasives are going to be there anyway. So we were trying to figure out, and then maybe using that as breaking that up and using that on the trails that are a little bit wet. But you are right, we do have the potential to spread around things that have been put in the woods.
Alright, so let's, it does sound like two different subjects. So let's focus on the leaf pickup and what we want to do this week of 12/5 in terms of, so we don't want to really call it a brush pickup, it's more of a, I guess, a grass clipping and garden.
It's a leaf, leaf, it's a leaf pickup, like usually, you pick up the leaves.
But it would be nice to add garden debris as well, Mark, if you're able to do that.
Yeah, I mean. You know, that's, that's fine with me. I have no problem with garden pickup. I mean, when you guys get off, you know, get onto the subject of, you know, invasive species, I mean, as long as it's in a bag, it all gets, you know, taken out of there.
Yeah.
Anything that's in a garden, I don't know what would be invasive in a garden.
No, it's more like not wanting to use that as the chipping material for the pathways in the woods.
Yes. I mean, listen, I always get, you know, wood chips. If you guys need wood chips, a load of wood chips, I have no problem dropping them off.
Alright, so this time around in the first week of December, it's, it's, you know, the normal leaf cleanup and then we can say garden clippings, grass clippings, that kind of stuff. And then maybe. Yeah, it has to be bagged, yeah.
Paper, paper or plastic?
Bag, not plastic.
Not plastic, paper bags.
Depot bags that, you know, you see out.
Okay. Great.
And then maybe, I was thinking, maybe next spring, we'll do a trail cleanup at the Sea Corps parcel and we can maybe.
I have dumpsters, so we can, we can set up a couple dumpsters right there in line where people can put actual brush in it.
Yeah.
If they have bags, they can throw bags in a dumpster, you know, so on and so forth. It's, it's, we can do it nice and easy, clean, and it'll be, it'll be very easy.
And I mean, there is a cost going to be associated with the dumpsters.
Yes.
Yeah, so alright, well, so let's plan that around, kind of a bigger cleanup of the trails come springtime.
And as far as wood chips goes, I can bring whatever, if I get a load of wood chips, I can, I'll put them wherever you want me to put them.
We just got to check with OSI about this one specific area and then, yeah, it'll be easy to get your truck.
Anything I'm chipping up is not invasive.
Alright.
Thanks so much, Mark.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hang up now, right?
Yeah, we can.
You're free.
Everybody have a good night.
You too.
Yeah.
Old issues, in the workshop, we discussed the smoke on Crown and Sea Corps Street. Building inspector's been made aware of it. He's gonna speak to the homeowners there. Was there anything else that we needed to add about that? If not, then the OSI Sea Corps update. Lisa, did you hear anything back from them?
No, not yet, but that's related to the whole chipping and trying to figure out what to put on the trails for the water.
Yeah, so I'm gonna reach out to them this week and see if I can get an answer back where we stand with everything. Last I knew, the conservation easement and the donation in kind had gone to their board. And then I just think they kind of figured that, we understood that that was the end of it, but just to get clarification on it, I'll, I'll reach out to them. Winter parking, is there anything more to add on that?
Just that the two other signs that we discussed are being made at ESP and they should be ready like 10 days, she said. So. That's where we're at with that.
When they come in, we'll have Mark put them up.
Yep, immediately.
Now, what about that, on Sea, that Adams Street, that trail is still in the street. Is that like a permanent fixture there now?
This is the work trailer down on Adams?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bill knows about that and he's supposed to speak to them as well. I think he already had one conversation with them. It, I don't think, does it have a plate on it or no?
It does.
It has a plate, but I don't really, it's registered, but it's, you know, it's still in, if you get a snowstorm tonight, it's in, it's in the street. You know?
It doesn't move.
Mindy, can you? Can you give Bill a nudge in the morning to address that?
Absolutely.
I did notice the Sea Corps lot this weekend was full of cars and they all parked on the right side, so that was a little bit of improvement.
Yes.
Good sign.
Airbnb survey results. Chris, do you want to go into that?
Sure, Dove and I are gonna go over the summary of the, the survey. I don't know if you want to do an intro or if you want me to, Dove.
Do you want graphic up as well?
Yes, please. I'm just pulling it up on my own computer. Okay, thank you. Well, so quickly, we had the survey live for about a month and we received 58 responses, I believe. And so we, Chris and I just, over this past weekend, we're analyzing the results and we've posted them to the website under the current issues section of the website, under short-term rentals. So anybody can see these results that we're going through right now. I'm just gonna quickly go through a couple slides showing, we break down, some data breakdown. And then Chris is going to sort of provide a snapshot of the anecdotal responses, but again, the full responses, you know, they've been stripped from any identifiers, but they can be read online as well. So of the people who responded, we had, like, the majority were not short-term hosts, but we had five who are current hosts and then six who are considering it in the near future. And then 45 who are not hosts and not considering it. Of those who are hosts, we wanted to know whether the income, you know, was a critical need for them to remain in Nelsonville. And, you know, it's kind of split. Four said, yes, the income allows me to remain a homeowner. And then others said, it's not critical, but it's welcome. And then we, you know, we presented a number of requirements to try to see whether people would be in support of any of these or, and if so, which ones were most popular. And of the ones we listed, the most popular were that the homo, that only a homeowner can be a host. So if you're a renter, you can't rent your unit as an Airbnb, even if your landlord approves. So that was quite popular with 67% of the survey takers selecting that as something they would support. In addition, the majority support introducing some kind of permit requirement. Sort of like, I think of it as kind of like a light touch permit where, where, you know, monitoring the number of rentals and also asking our building inspector to perform some kind of safety or fire inspection. And then other things had some popularity, not as much as those, however. And 20% of the survey takers said that they would not support any of these requirements. So they kind of want hands-off, no regulation of the short-term rental on behalf of the village. So then we had a question which was about which of these items are most important to you as a Nelsonville resident? Because we were trying to sort of get at the heart of, you know, what, what could we tackle, what can be regulated in a way to sort of, you know, ensure these important characteristics that residents really value about Nelsonville? And the most popular thing that was selected as being important to Nelsonville residents was just knowing that the village is tracking the number of hosts and has their contact details in an emergency. Because at the moment, we are not tracking anything. And then knowing that the building inspector is monitoring the units for code compliance, insurance and safety. So those were definitely the two most popular. And then also very popular, ensuring that long-term rentals remain available for those who want to move to Nelsonville. So, so this was just, I think, helpful feedback. Another thing I just wanted to point out is if you drill down and look at the five current renters, sorry, five current hosts who have short-term rentals that they've made available. We sort of wanted to look at what their responses were to things. And something that I found interesting is that 40% of current hosts in Nelsonville would support permit requirements. And then another thing is asking the same hosts, what is important to you as a Nelsonville resident? 20% said the flexibility to make extra income without any restrictions or village oversight. So only 20% of those who are current hosts would really balk at any oversight. Whereas 60% said that they, you know, that they would be happy with the flexibility to make extra income while abiding by certain regulations. And I think that's it for my part.
I was kind of all over the place in terms of the, the presentation there. I wasn't sure exactly where you wanted it to be. But I mean, this is incredibly detailed and it's available on the website. So everyone, if you have any questions, definitely go in there and download it. Chris, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, so I called the, the write-in responses. For, we wanted to get a little more perspective on if you've experienced any positive or negative effects of existing short-term rentals in Nelsonville and allow folks to explain it in a little bit more detail. Though it's a little bit lengthy, it's at the end of those graphs there, but I'll just highlight a few from each section. Folks who had more, definitely more folks expressed negative experiences. One, you know, noted a long-term renter had been evicted for new homeowners or new owners to create a short-term rental. And having to, having to direct intoxicated renters to correct addresses. And, you know, fear of strangers coming in and out in our intimate village setting. Your fire caused by short-term renters while occupying rental with no owner on site. Parking, street parking was another thing that came up often. Feeling as if they're living next to a business and residential area. Then for the positive experiences, I believe probably a host saying that they're, you know, very conscientious of their neighbors and try only renting to two people at a maximum unless they have children. It's been essential in having places for our family to stay when they're visiting from out of town. Obviously, there isn't a lot of hotel space or in, in the area, so that helped out for some families in a positive way. And now there's, you know, really enjoy having their guests as, as short-term renter hosts and sharing our community with them. Others, you know, haven't really noticed that there are, there are rentals around. And then our other write-in question was, you know, just tell us additional thoughts that you have about short-term rentals. And I tried to categorize these into their major kind of issue areas. Many were concerned about safety, having unknown people coming in and out. Safety noise, increased demand, some village and town services undermining sense of community, but safety first and foremost. Others were concerned about feeling of a loss of community, sense of community, worrying about, you know, if several houses on a street were used for short-term rentals, really changing the neighborhood atmosphere. Other area, issue areas were folks prefer long-term rentals over short-term rentals and having longer-term residents to add to the community. Permits, a lot of folks are expressing that they are in favor of permits, making sure that folks have the proper insurance and bonding to do short-term rentals. Agreeing about permitting it, but if folks have a problem with a particular house, that we have a system in place to be able to deal with that. More noise, additional, some additional suggestions for, for renters for regulating that we had been talking about, but maybe we're in part of the survey. You know, not having a high percentage of buildings, be short-term rentals. Actually, we did have a question on that. So overall, I think that this, the survey was really great to hear from folks and hear their experiences thus far. It does sound like there is a clear need to make sure that hosts and, and the village are enforcing our, our codes and special noise ordinances, et cetera. And making sure that the resident's quality of life is not being too adversely impacted by, by having short-term rental. And as we've said before, this isn't going to be the, the last of our, our discussions about this. This is kind of just a tipping point and getting some feedback from folks was, was good. And we're going to start drafting the legislation with our lawyer in our next steps. And we'll be able to talk about that draft with everybody in the community and get feedback on specifics next.
And if anybody has any kind of questions about which ways we're heading, I mean, the four sample legislations that are on our website are kind of the gist of what are in our thoughts right now. So I'm assuming that, anticipate that we'll have something put together that kind of draws from each one of those. Any other questions about Airbnb or anybody have anything to add? We are gonna open it up to public comment at the very end. So, but if anybody on the board has any other questions about the short-term rental issue before we move on. I just want to say thank you to both of you for putting that survey together. Again, it was very detailed and, you know, it gives us a lot of really good, you know, data points to move forward on. So nobody can say that we're, we're going ahead on this without doing our homework, so. And it's been probably the one issue or one of a couple issues that we've discussed since day one, since I think all of us got on the board. So it'll be good to finally get something done. Correspondence, Mindy, do you want to?
Sure, okay, so I sent the, that, that letter with it. It was just something interesting. You know, maybe I could forward it to Cold Spring or something, but it's somebody who does, like, you know, the thing that they do with the bandstand with the Sunday concert or whatever. It's like, you know, for community participation. I thought it was something interesting, so I passed it on, you know, share it, we'll share it with the public. And, and then of course, our new chip statement, which I'm getting ready, part of our abstract this month is the reason it's so big is because the $19,000 balance to Poemist, which, you know, we're gonna get some of that back from the state. So the chip statement is the other correspondence that I sent. So that's our two correspondents. So that's our two correspondents for the month.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, you can refer Mr. Opadia, I guess is how you pronounce his name, to Cold Spring Chamber. I mean, I would love to have a block party to celebrate the, you know, vaccination and emergence from COVID quarantine for everybody, but, you know, God knows when that'll be. Yeah, next summer may be a bit optimistic, but we'll see. New issues, the village's special prosecutor contract, we need to re-up this, correct?
Yes.
So just some backstory on this, the county prosecutor basically has farmed out the prosecution of certain cases or has made it the responsibility of municipalities to basically hire independent prosecutors to try these cases because of the workload involved and Carmel not being able to make it onto this side of the county on a regular basis. Basically, that's an oversimplification of it, but that's what we were told. So back in, I believe, January or February of last year, we went and had to hire our own independent prosecutor. And we basically have only used him three times, correct?
Yes.
Most of that is because of COVID and lockdown and the courts being closed for the majority of the year. But now as things have started to reopen, we've, he's now involved in a couple of cases, right, Mindy?
Yes.
All right, so you want to, would you like to read the contract? You can approve it? You want me to do it? All right. Contract between law offices of Andre Gill, P L C, and the village of Nelsonville. This agreement is made this, let's see, it's the sixteenth day of November, twenty twenty. By in between the village of Nelsonville and municipal corporation of the state of New York, having an office in place of business at two fifty-eight Main Street, Nelsonville, New York, one oh five one six. Herein after referred to as the village and law offices of Andre Gill, nine seventy-three Route twenty-two, Suite three, Brewster, New York. Whereas the village desires to obtain the legal services and representation of the attorney. Whereas the attorney desires to provide legal services and representation to the village for the compensation and on the terms herein provided. Now therefore, in consideration of the terms and conditions herein contained, the parties agree as follows. The village is necessary funds to pay the attorney under budget line. And do you have that budget line?
Have it. I'll fill it in. I have the budget right here. I'm looking for it.
Secondly, shall furnish legal representation for any local law violations and any non-penal law misdemeanors, including vehicle and traffic law misdemeanors not presently handled by the Putnam County District Attorney's Office. Third, this contract shall commence on January first, twenty twenty-one, and shall continue to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, unless terminated sooner in accordance with the provisions hereafter set forth. Fourth, the attorney during the performance of this agreement shall not represent a client in connection with any matter involving the village, nor appear on behalf of any individual, corporation, or other before any board or instrumentality of the village of Nelsonville, nor shall the attorney represent a client in connection with any criminal defense in the courts of the village of Nelsonville during the term of this agreement. Fifth, the attorney shall be in a attorney-client relationship with the village, and all communications between the attorney and the village shall be confidential and privileged to the fullest extent permitted by law, unless such privilege is specifically waived in writing by the village. Sixth, the attorney shall report only to the village board of the village of Nelsonville or their designee and shall within five days receive a filing saying copies of all papers served and/or filed in any action or proceeding to the mayor's office and the village clerk's office and to the planning board and or zoning board of appeals, if such boards are involved in the action or proceeding, and to any other persons in the village involved in the action. Seventh, the attorney understands that settlement of all actions, claims, disputes handled by the attorney pursuant to this contract must be approved by the village board of the village of Nelsonville. Moreover, in no circumstances shall the attorney obligate or attempt to obligate the village by way of settlement or otherwise that the express written consent of the village board. Eighth, for the professional services rendered to the village, the representation of the village for the village justice court for vehicle and traffic law violations, penal law violations and village code violations. The village agrees to pay the attorney an hourly fee at the rate of one hundred and fifty dollars per hour for attorney and eighty-five dollars per hour for paralegal. The attorney shall properly maintain a detailed log, including time and dispersment records relative to and contemporaneous with the services rendered by the attorney or the attorney's staff for the preceding month, the task for which reimbursement is sought and the dates on which the work was performed. Any and all requests for payment to be made shall be submitted to the attorney by the attorney on properly executed claim forms of the village of Nelsonville and paid only after approval by the village board. In no event shall final payment be made to the attorney prior to the completion of all professional services. Let's see, how much more do we have here?
So long. It's crazy long.
Let's see, the ninth, the work to be performed pursuant to the terms of this agreement shall commence promptly upon assignment of a matter to the attorney that shall be conducted in the best interest of the village as determined by the village board or its designee. The attorney shall not assign or transfer any part of the contract or any right or privilege granted hereunder without the prior consent of the village of Nelsonville. The village upon thirty days' notice to the attorney may terminate this agreement. All proceeds, all records compiled by attorney completing the record described in this agreement, including but not limited to pleadings, transcripts, written reports, studies, computer printouts, et cetera, shall become and remain the property of the village of Nelsonville. The attorney shall deliver to the village all such records upon termination or deemed by the village board. Twelfth, any reported delegation of duties or assignments or rights under this agreement without the prior express written consent of the village is void. Incredibly detailed, we've reviewed this previously, so I'm just going to highlight here. The attorney agrees that it has no interest, will not require, acquire any interest directly or indirectly with conflict in any manner or degree with the performance of the services and duties hereunder. The attorney further agrees that in the performance of his, of this agreement, no person having any such interest shall be employed by it. Oh my God. Fourteenth, the attorney shall comply at its own expense with the provisions of all applicable state and municipal requirements and will, with all state and federal laws applicable to the attorney as an employer of labor or otherwise. Fifteen, no discrimination by the attorney shall be permitted during the performance of this agreement. Sixteenth, as an independent contractor, the attorney will be responsible for all damage, loss, or injury to persons or property that may arise and or be incurred during the conduct and progress of work to be performed hereunder. She's seventeen. The failure of the village to insist in any one or more instance upon strict performance of any term or condition herein contained shall not be deemed a waiver or relinquishment for the future of such term of condition, but the same shall remain in full force and effect. No waiver by the village of any provision hereof shall be implied. And eighteen, all notices of any nature referred to in this agreement shall be in writing and hand-delivered or sent by registered or certified mail. Return receipt requested postage prepaid by the receptive, to the receptive addresses set forth below. Nineteenth, this agreement and its attachments constitute the entire agreement between the parties with respect to the subject matter hereof and shall supersede all previous negotiations. Twentieth, this agreement shall not be enforceable until signed by all parties. Twenty-first, this agreement shall be construed and enforced in accordance with the laws of the state of New York. Twenty-second, the agreement is executed in two counterpart originals. Twenty-third, the attorney shall procure and maintain at his own expense and without the expense for the village of Nelsonville, the insurance specified in the request for proposals and shall maintain said insurance for all work performed during the duration of this agreement. Twenty-four, attorney shall complete a request for taxpayer identification number and certification form, W nine. Witness hereof, the parties have executed this contract. Any questions about what is going on here and the purpose of this? We do have one sample from the law offices of Andre Gill for work that was performed last February. This was on three matters pending before the village court, and it was to the cost of eight hundred and seventy dollars. He gives detailed breakdowns as to all the services that are provided.
I have a couple of quick questions. So we, this is a change because we're being required to, to handle this separately now. And it was being covered under whom before?
DA Tandy at Putnam County.
Okay, so it's not a new service necessarily. It's just a new lawyer to do it and they have new fees.
Same lawyer that we brought on board last January. But I mean, to your point, it is a service that was being provided by Putnam County, but is now the cost of being Nelsonville, the village of Cold Spring, the town of Phillips Town. Every municipality has been kind of forced to do this.
And so we don't know how much, we have no idea kind of how much it's going to incur for us for the entirety of the new calendar year.
No, we don't.
Well, depends on how many bad guys there are.
Yeah, it depends on how many, you know, misdemeanors and things come before the court and what cost is kind of brought back to the village coffers, whether, you know, it balances out or not. Originally, when we talked to DA Tandy, he basically made it seem like it would pay for itself, which without having a full year of of court, we only had basically two months this year.
Mike, do you get the sense that this arrangement sort of pushing it off onto the municipalities from the county is going to be forever, or is it temporary because of budget concerns at the county level?
The current DA seemed to make it clear to us that it was going to be permanent. Hopefully it won't be.
Well, obviously, it's, it's an expense we hadn't budgeted for, so that always concerns me. But it's clear that we don't have a choice. And it would have been nice to been able to advocate for this earlier to the county. Not, that it would probably have made a difference, but would have been nice to be able to do.
And we, Mindy, we do not have to vote on this this evening. I mean, it's, we have until January first to really you know, re-up this. If we wanted to kind of sit down and talk with Cold Spring and Phillips Town to see how they've been handling it and what their experience has been.
If we have some time, that would be a good idea, I think.
We put this on the agenda just to get ahead of it before January first. I'll, I'll promise you one thing, though, that if it comes up the next, next month, I'm not going to reread this contract.
They might change the page.
Oh my goodness.
Is there a motion to table to next meeting? All right, is there a second?
Second.
Always a favor. I tabled the December meeting and then you want to reach out to Jeff in the village and I don't know who's at the town now for court clerk to see what their experience.
Well, it's, it's Cindy Paragio at the, at Phillips Town Court and it's Kathy.
Oh yeah, Kathy.
Kathy and yeah, I'll get, I'll get in touch with them.
All right, great.
Kathy Costello. And just Kathy and just Costello. And that's Cindy. All right.
Let's see, I think that was everything for this evening, correct?
I believe so.
The one thing I will touch on, and I'm sure we have a lot of people here in the, the audience that want to discuss the legal matters that are before the village right now. But the village will not be making any kind of detailed statement at all about any pending litigation other than our lawyers are well aware of it and they're handling it. I can say that we did bring Jonathan Bardavid, who is, you know, associated with Bob Luzardi's office, who is the village, village attorney, village legal representation. He has some background in federal courts, you know, federal lawsuits. He's come on board as our in-house representation. We're going to be paying him two hundred dollars an hour and any legal aids or legal assistance, a hundred dollars an hour going forward. And beyond that, I don't believe there's going to be any more of a statement from the, the village board this evening, but there's no other issues. Does anybody have any other unfinished business or new business? And if that's so, I'll open it up to public comment. So if you want to unmute yourself and just announce who you are, where you live and fire away.
Can we just read his talk?
Yeah, say who you are, where you live, and say your business.
David Eisenbach, thirty-four, Billy's Way. My question was regarding the Valella and Rossi lawsuits and the October thirtieth ruling regarding the access road. The New York State Courts ruled, put an injunction on the building of the access road. Will you revoke the construction permit until such a time as the access road will be allowed by the courts?
We're not going to comment on the pending litigation. I can't.
But this doesn't, this doesn't actually involve the village directly. This is just, how are you approaching the enforcement of that ruling?
The building inspector is well aware of it and we're going on the advice of our attorney.
Which is, which is what?
I can't, I'm not going to go into it.
You can't say how the, it's a question of how are you approaching the enforcement?
Mister David, I understand completely and we're not going to comment on it. Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Yes, hello?
Go right ahead, Kenny.
Yeah, I, I, I don't understand why you didn't want to have a conversation with David. He has, there's a lot of community people that have signed on board and you know that. And you don't want to make a comment on that, and yet there's a lot of people that are going to be affected by what happens on, on Rockledge Road with the cell tower, and it's something that you can't avoid and put off and put off and put off. And we're going to have to come up with some solution that works for the homeowners and the people that live in the vicinity of this cell tower that right now is on hold, from my understanding. But i- it is a concern and it should be in, in your mind and in the thoughts of the mind of the board because it's going to probably end up going to another litigation. And I know that you're under duress from your own, you feel your own population of community, but obviously there's enough people that are concerned, really concerned about what's going on, on, on our road. And it's something that has to be looked at again. And so I'm just hoping that you'll look into it deeper with the board and maybe readjust what your decisions have been in the past with regard to fighting this cell tower. And I know it's something you don't like to deal with, but it's the reality. And the people up here on, living on this hill are very concerned with it. And we have many children and families now living on this road, living close to this vicinity of this cell tower. And so it's, it's on our minds every day. I just want you to know that.
I understand completely and I could tell you it's been on our minds every day and we've lived the same reality for well over the past year. And again, I, you know, we, we settled one lawsuit to save the village a large expense. And it's sad to think that we're going to have to go and expend more money, taxpayer money to defend against another lawsuit. But I understand everybody's concerns and misgivings and they're shared by everybody and, but, you know, we're, we're here to represent the whole village and we got to do what's best for the village in its entirety. And again, I, I can't comment specifically about active litigation. I mean, that's, that's just, it's just standard, you know.
It's, it's, the question is, what was your decision on how you're approaching the decision that's already been made regarding the access road and the stay on any construction that can happen on that access road? Do you, do you understand?
I understand completely your question that we've answered it. Our attorney is addressing it.
You haven't answered it. That's, my question is, why, why can't you answer what the decision?
Made. David, that is our answer. David, that is our answer. Our attorney is addressing it, period.
So there is, there hasn't been a decision? That's my question.
We, we have consulted with our attorney, period. That's, that's it. Is there any other public comment? Nobody?
Well, look, look, am I still on?
You're still, let's, let's give everybody a shot if anybody else out there wants to speak. If not, we'll come right back to you, Kenny.
Thank you.
All right, shoot, go for it.
Uh, yeah, I just, I, I think are you gonna, are you gonna keep us informed? And especially David, who's, uh, taking this up and the few, the two other, uh, houses on the road, families that are in, in litigation, uh, and there's a lot of people that support their litigation because it, it's gonna be, we see what's coming down the road with this situation, and we're living here. And we don't wanna, we don't wanna lose what we have. That's why we all live up here and moved to this beautiful place, right? And it happens to be in Nelsonville, and it's, it's very unique and it's very special. And we have children here, and it's gonna cause such an uproar if this goes, doesn't get set back. And I think we should fight to set it back. I, I, and, and your, your hand was forced, I understand that, by the community. And I think you should really look at the numbers, uh, over thirty-nine plaintiffs that, that went on board to try to have you reverse maybe to, to some of the decisions you've made in the past because they're, you know, again, it's, it's gonna affect a lot of people. And like I said before, we have a lot of new families up here. We got a lot of kids on the road up here. And the, it's gonna be a, a real bad thing if that goes through. And that's why so many people are fighting it, because we know what's gonna happen, and we're really concerned about it. You know, okay, and there's a lot of longtime residents here that are living close to that situation. And they feel like they didn't get their fair shake. So I'm just letting you know how a lot of people feel. And, you know, i- i- in my mind, it's a no-brainer. I know it's a money issue, and I agree, that's a problem. But we've gotten to the crossroads, and some of us had to cross the road the other way from what, you know, you guys made as a decision, as being a village, you know, mayor and board. So, you know, I respect all you for the work you do, so it's not an attack on you personally or anyone on the board. It's just the realization that this is a bad project for, and not the right setting, okay? I just want you to, I, I know I revamped it a thousand times, but I'm just like, no, it's not personal.
I understand completely, and, uh, you know, I, I don't think anybody on the board or myself takes any of this personally. We understand the facts behind everything. Uh, I do wanna make one thing clear, it's not just a money issue. Uh, everybody followed along through this entire process from when the Z B A first denied the project all the way up until last January, when we made the settlement with Homeland. Uh, it's not just a money issue, it was some pretty substantial legal, um, impediments to moving forward with any kind of challenge as well, and I, I just want that to be clear as well. So we did not make any, this was not an arbitrary decision by any means. Uh, anybody else have any comment from the public? Anybody?
Also ask if anybody had any comment on the short-term rental, um, survey that we're con, and regulations that we're considering.
Anybody?
Thank you for doing that as far as the, the short term, because you do have to keep an eye on it, and it's very important that, uh, permanent residents here don't lose any of their freedoms and use of their land and, and, and have abusive people or whatever it might be. So I think you are doing your due diligence in that respect, and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Kenny. Is there anybody else on the board wanna, uh, have any questions or say anything? Uh, no other members of the public have any questions or thoughts? I just wanna give everybody a chance to speak if they wish.
Oh, I, I got one other thing. I don't wanna be a pain in the ass. Mindy, are you there? Hello, is she there? Yeah, I, I'm still.
I'm here. Yes, Ken, I'm here.
Can you bring up, can you bring up them, uh, the issue with, with the tree that still hasn't been removed? Maybe you can get that taken care of. I would really appreciate that. Uh, I, I was good enough to get Central Hudson to alleviate the problem of the, of the, uh, straps that were across the road. So that tree's ready to, ready to be taken out of commission because it's already dead. And it's just sitting there rotten in front, in my, on, on the abutting property of mine. And I have to look at it every day, so I'd really appreciate it if we could knock that out of the box, and it doesn't have to be an issue anymore.
Is it marked, Ken?
Yeah, remember, you came and saw it, the number?
I know, I saw it, but is it marked? It's clearly marked, right?
It's obvious, but I'll mark it if that's what you want me to do.
I, because I just gotta tell them what to look for.
Okay, I'll, I'll put some, something on it. I'll put a ribbon, something on it, okay?
Gray line on it or something. Okay, thank you.
I'm not a gr, I don't do graffiti.
They're taking the tree down, it's dead. The stump is gone, right?
Yes, that, that was excellent.
Okay.
They're, they're very good at what they do, Phillips Town trade.
Anything else?
I have one question if nobody else has, from the public has any thing.
Oh, sure thing. Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, you only had fifty-eight respondents to the short-term rental survey. Now, I know it probably statistically in terms of, um, surveys, that's probably a pretty decent response, but still, were you disappointed at all that you only got fifty-eight out of a village of, what, six hundred residents or, or so?
Yeah, well, we have two hundred and seventy approximately households, um, so that's not awful. And we really just, because, you know, we don't get a huge response in our public meetings, wanted to get more information from folks than we normally would have, so I think that it was a good tool for that. But we're, we're definitely not legislating based on the survey. We just wanted to get some more input from folks.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I, I think, I can say for myself, I was very pleased with the response, given that, you know, at our public meetings, if we have four or five people in the room to speak about the issue, that's a lot. So I, I think to get fifty-eight or sixty, I mean, that's a a pretty large slice of the, the resident households. Anything else, Liz?
Uh, no, that's it.
All righty, anybody else out there in the crowd wanna speak? Uh, I'll give it, uh, another couple of seconds. If not, uh, I mean, uh, there's a motion to adjourn, I'll entertain it.
Make a motion.
There is a second.
Second.
All is in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, take care.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Night now.